Let's see, Terry Jones.
Let's see, we've got a...
I think we should take comments from the floor.
Huge crowd tonight.
That's what we're doing.
Riveted.
Do the comments, Brian.
Too late.
You all have a copy of the DPW Activity Report. As you can see, I did send some pictures of the progress of the lines, new lines building, the teardown and the progress of the building. I think it'll be a nice little addition over there. Just some electrical work to do and we've got some indoor plumbing. Hook up the toilet and the sink and put the water meter in. And then everything should be in working order there. I don't know how quick we'll get to that, being it's winter anyway, so there's really no point in... But we get a slow day or something, we can go down there and work on that. We will be paving Thursday. We're going to start over on Riverside Drive. Ronnie and I talked, there wasn't a lot of base over there, so we're going to put binder down, which is typically what you do before you put your top down. They're probably, if it was lucky, three inches of blacktop on that entire street, which is very surprising, being this is a bid project many years ago. So I think what we'll do is we will put binder down this year and then next year we'll microseal it like we've done on Strawberry Lane, and then we won't even have to put a top coat on it, and that will last. And actually, once you microseal, you can do that every five years paving. You have to wait every 10 years to get reimbursed for it, so that's a good thing. And that street will be a lot better. There were some drainage issues, and we're going to try to work around that, pitch things to different drains and stuff, so hopefully that works. And then we'll move over to Union Street if there's time, but I doubt we'll get to it on Thursday. And then Monday and Tuesday, we will finish over on Union, Dead End of Jane and Mercer Avenue. I've got a couple of spots over at French Creek Marina, some ditch lines and stuff to do over there, but nothing critical over there. So I just wanted to keep the board informed about all of that stuff. I don't think I have anything else. Is there any questions for me?
I have a question. So the fourth photo, what's that white thing? It's kind of sitting in the middle of the...
This one? Oh, it's an old cabinet or something.
That's what it looks like, alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something that PJ must have cleaned out and threw over there.
Yeah, I was like, is that something he put in?
I think they had stuff started or something. It kind of looks like an old refrigerator.
Well, that, I'll be able to sleep tonight now.
Okay.
Terry, what is the accessibility to the bathrooms? Like, when would those be open? How do we control that?
The ones at the lines?
Yeah, they're at the lines.
Typically Scott Johnson, for events, unlocks them, and we were cleaning them, but it was just, you never knew who was, when and if, and they were really rundown. I'm sure you're all aware of that. So it was kind of a pain, hard to keep it clean because it was just, you're tracking mud in, you're tracking mud in. So going forward, we will have a key, and we will try to maintain and keep it clean when we do our bathrooms before the dock staff starts. We'll throw that into the itinerary.
Speaking of the bathrooms in that building, just came to me, I hate to do this, should we though put some cameras around there? Because if we leave those bathrooms open for any length of time, you're a destruction by individuals. Is that just something we...
Down here, we still talking?
Yes, I'm saying...
Yeah, well, there's one bathroom, so, I mean, it's a unisex bathroom, but, you know.
You know, I'm just thinking of what we saw downtown.
The good thing, the good thing about the layout of this building is the bathrooms are facing the field. Before, they, you know, they didn't face the field, so anybody could do anything there. Nobody was really paying attention because it was out of sight, out of mind, you know? So now at least it's visible from that point.
Well, I think something for us to keep in mind because of destruction and then...
Yep.
You walk in, nobody's going to know what you did inside.
No.
So it's...
And I was concerned when the doors were off for the few days, but nobody seemed to bother it, or, so that was good.
Do we have Wi-Fi or anything that we can actually...
Not to my knowledge.
I don't think we do up there.
So we'd have to have that.
You have some sort of Mi-Fi or some box or something, some sort there.
That's just a thought.
Is there been issues in the past, like with people?
Yeah, we've had issues in the past.
Sometimes if you just put a dummy camera up?
You could.
That solves the problem.
Yep. You can put a stat sign or whatever it is. No, not stat.
Are you under surveillance or whatever?
Right, exactly. I could do that. I think I have some surveillance signs actually.
Well, that's a good idea, yeah, just to see. Yeah, I like that idea.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Good.
The dock staff will be on at Rotary this weekend for Pumpkin Chunkin', and I think I put in my report, I believe the three new guys, newer guys, will be on duty, doing trash and keeping up with everything. They'll probably come in around 11 o'clock and leave four or five o'clock whenever everything's picked up, so. And this will probably be the last weekend where we do both days on the weekend.
So it looks like it may not rain now?
Yeah, looking nice for Saturday. Saturday night now, so.
Up until now, it's called for rain.
Yeah, they were. I know they only have four trebuchets or four...
They told me six, they only need three.
Oh, I talked to Bobby this morning, he said they only had, they were down to four.
Oh, really?
That's what he said. I think there's still quite a few youths, but, you know, I don't know, that's a bad thing, or maybe you turn it into more of a fall fest or an October fest and have that part of the festivities, because there is other things going on down there.
And I know that's been a conversation over the years because of the danger, you know, they go so fast.
It's just tough to find volunteers anymore. Nobody wants to volunteer, and it's time consuming. If it wasn't for like Steve Dorris' crew and Bobby Lanfor, who spend days setting up the nets and getting everything in place and in order, and us taking the bleachers down and all that stuff, it'd be tough to pull that one off. So kudos to those guys.
Yep.
DPW could have one. You have one, couldn't you?
Yeah, well, we could design one. We should go in with the town. We talked about it, but Steve just blew everybody out of the water with his cannon, so, I mean, where do you go from there?
Anything else for Terry? Get that leaf sucker up and go.
It's coming. It's all together. He's all done, and it's been gone through, so it should be like brand new, knock on wood. No issues. Everybody good?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. Any questions on the police report? Any questions on the consent agenda?
No, not for me.
No?
We did notice in here Amanda, it's not a big issue, but, let's see, where are we? Page three, I think it is? Trustee McDowell, Pumpkin Chunkin' is on the, what, 18th rather than the 24th? Otherwise, I didn't see any other problems. Could I have a motion for the consent agenda one through five?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have the Capital Projects. Any questions on that? Could we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see, we need a motion and vote for the resolution of the lease installment purchase for the new truck.
It says here that there, we've seen a contract. I don't recall seeing a contract here.
I don't know if we've actually, if the board has seen the contract. I'm making the assumption, which is wrong, that both Terry and Amanda have looked through it.
Do we know what kind of lease it is? Is it a finance lease, a home maintenance lease?
It's just a finance lease, and it's because we own it at the end. We approved it at budget time to lease the equipment. Now we just have to finalize it for the financing.
So what kind of lease is it? Is it a dollar buyout, or is it...
No dollar buy. We own it at the end. We pay five installments, annual installments, and we own the truck at the end.
So it's a five-year lease?
Yep. Interest rate, if you want to know that. It did decrease from the quote we had when we did the budget.
It increased?
So all that's going to be in the minutes? Since we haven't seen the contract, you put all the parameters in the minutes of the meeting, so we know what we're agreeing to?
Oh, I can.
If that's possible, that'd be great.
Do you have that interest rate there, Amanda?
Is it possible to send email to us real quick? Is that like... So, let's see.
So, everybody have a nice weekend?
Yeah.
Nancy, see that the watering line that the building is out there on Washington?
Have they gotten it put together? Be happy to three quarters of it? I'd seen it over there on Wednesday, but not put together. And then Terry said they're putting the barge over by Mary Street or at the Mary Street Dock, so that when they need to go get it, it's set to go. Because they'll drag it over to Bartlett.
Is that through water, or are they not through the village, right? And take it by the water over there?
Correct.
It's a good piece of the puzzle that has come together?
Yes. And I, when I was down at Barton Point on Wednesday, they had everything secured and looked like they were ready to go. And they may have been working that day. It really isn't taking up that much space down there, so it could have been, it would have been fine if it was done in the middle of summer. Was my, is my observation.
Oh, so we didn't really necessarily need to wait?
We had to wait because of the D E C. But otherwise, to say about the other group, not too much. But this has all worked out. What did you find, Amanda?
So the interest rate is 5.6 now, and we will pay five monthly installments for $48,345.
Yearly or monthly?
Monthly. Or annual, sorry.
Annual, okay. So that's locked in for the five years, right?
Yes. Annual for this contract.
That's a good deal.
Well, that is still not that much different from what you said, or no?
It's lower than that.
I hate it when that happens.
Well, they originally hadn't thought, they were just going to continue the contract as it was written in the spring, and I said interest rates have decreased. What's happening with that can be decreased next week.
I'm pretty sure to ask Terry, but where is the truck?
I think it's coming Friday.
Okay.
Finally. That's why we wanted to get this done tonight, get it back to the mill fund on Thursday.
You know, some day last week, it was in Mexico. I said, are you talking about Mexico?
Yeah.
He goes, I'm not talking about Mexico, New York. I said, okay.
So if it was in Mexico some day last week, there's no body out yet, right?
I haven't been, I'll be honest.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
So it wouldn't be?
I assume no, yes.
So we're funding just the chassis right now?
Yeah, and they won't send them the money until it's delivered. We're funding the entire thing, but some first, which is the leasing company, will not send them until they're ready to deliver the truck. The last I knew, they were delivering it Friday, so we were funding it Thursday. I'm sure before I send them all this...
What's the lead time then on the body, when you put in the equipment being put on?
Yeah.
Right. So you need a motion?
Yes. We need a motion and a second. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
And then it's a roll call.
I'll vote.
May I?
Yes.
Trustee McDowell?
Yes.
Trustee Reed?
Yes.
Trustee Rip?
Yes.
Yes.
And it says here on Exhibit A, 1, 2026 HB 507, four-by-two truck with Henderson plow package. So my thoughts would be, it'll come out at one time. Pardon me? What do you think?
Sorry.
Any questions on the general code book? This is what we, which is on the websites?
Yeah, one up a hundred bucks, not too bad.
I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lori Arnaud has stepped down from the zoning board, so Michael McMahon will be taking that position. He was an alternate, and now he will become a full-time board member. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that.
To accept him? In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then accepting or having Grossman Saint-Denis Mar? You speak French, Mike, you know better than I. For doing our... Yeah, our annual audit. Now, do we need just one this year, or do we still need a, is this the single audit?
So it's a single every year, and then every two years it's one? Got it.
Well, we were behind a number of years. But we are...
Thanks to...
Yeah, we're all caught up to date, which is good.
At least some of this will be paid for by the Capital Projects, because we're required to do this because of the Capital Projects.
Oh, actually, okay. I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We've not put this on the agenda, anyway. We would like to appoint Mike Ashkoff as interim zoning, as long as, for Dave's absence, and we're not sure how long that will be. But Mike has gotten all caught up, or he's fairly caught up with all of the work, and now he's working on just current permits. Plus, he's taking another codes course this week, and in two weeks, he takes another codes course. There's two in the month of October, so...
Are we doing anything with hours?
I asked him to work as many hours as he could. You know, originally, he was 10 to 15, but I don't think that, he's not going to be able to get it all accomplished every, you know, in the week. And he said yes. It was not a problem for him to work until the work got done.
Do we have a cap on the other side of it, like, to...
He's not going to work 45 hours.
Not necessary.
I don't think it's necessary. I have no problem in telling him that, but I don't believe he wants to work 45 hours.
No, I mean, it makes sense. He's already working with Dave, so...
So could I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As Trustee McDowell stated in his email in reference to the barge, his idea is a great idea, and so we'll discuss during the budget process, during budget time, of having, say, a commercial rate and a regular rate. And I agree, there should be a commercial rate. And as I had said in the email, you know, we noticed, you probably all have noticed how Bach has theirs facing this direction, but he's got tied up against his property?
Yeah.
Or close to it?
Right.
And I talked to another barge owner, and I said, is there any, could they park, you know, dock them this way rather than this way? And he said he did not see an issue with that. I have been told numerous times, and you all already know this, that the wind smoothes them around. But I think if we make that concerted effort, both in, when they come in to get their mooring license or permit, however that is, and instill that into them this fall and next spring, that will help. But to say, no, you can't be there, that's a tough one, because then where do they go? You know, there's no other place for them to go. I just think they need to be more conscientious of other individuals, not just their barge.
Would it make sense to have a cap on how many barges, like...
Well, yes, I think, yeah, I don't agree with what was happening there. That is incorrect. I don't agree with that. So I don't know if we can just, you know, discuss it further. Do you just have one mooring, which I think is better?
Yeah.
But six, no.
French Bay, there's only three moorings out there. Over here, there's four, just to be accurate information. And there's a sailboat at one, furthest one at... I mean, I'd be happy if, I think the residents would be happy if the barges kept putting on the furthest ones out. And limit, first of all, I think it's dangerous to put that many on the mooring. I don't know if they're, I couldn't tell if they were anchored or what they were, but there's six vessels on the barge mooring. And that, in a storm, will drag that mooring, and I don't care how big it is, it'll drag it.
I can't believe that the mooring is holding a barge. I think they're dropping down their I beams.
I couldn't tell because the I beams were pretty high, but the water was pretty low, too, so I couldn't... Anyway, you know, and also it's very murky over there as well, so... But anyway, the point is is that they, that's just, I think it's taking advantage, you know, and so...
I was also thinking, you sent that email, that if we increase the cost per year to make it somewhat reasonable, you know, they may think of alternative places, which would not be a bad thing for us either, you know?
My experience is that moorings are typically cheaper than docked, but not that much. That's why I gave you that information I got from French Bay Marina about what it costs to dock a 30-foot boat there, which is quite a bit more than what we charge for moorings. But anyway, somewhere between 300 and 3,000 is the right number.
Go for the higher.
Now, I did notice, because I've looked a couple of times, and I did notice, last week, there were no barges in the bank.
That's why I said something to you, because I go, I thought maybe Nancy spoke to him and may moved them.
Might have just been out working.
They're working.
Yeah. And that's what I'm hoping, that some of them may go to another area.
Well, the other thing was too, is that I know it wasn't this year. This year's been relatively better than last year. Last year, there were some barges out there that absolutely did not run the whole season. And I was wondering, maybe we could have something in there that, you know, if you are not currently using the barge, that leaving it there for the whole season, you know, we're looking for.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I know. You gotta enforce something like that.
Well, that, yeah. But at budget time, we'll talk about the cost and increase that, because I think that's only fair to everyone.
Yeah, significantly, yeah, I think so.
Let's see, we have Pumpkin Chunkin' on Saturday, and on the next board meeting, which is Monday, the 27th, we'd like to have a workshop to go over the financing for the water project. So that would be at 4:00 on October 27.
Can we add anything into that workshop?
Possibly.
Well, I know that you were talking about a workshop for one-way traffic, thoughts, and the other...
Yeah, whatever time we have left, we can talk about other situations, sure.
Okay, because sidewalks for next year, I was hoping we could hit early. Seems to take a long time to...
Yeah, I think that's going to, yes, I don't, yes, if they can start earlier in the spring, I don't know. But I think that's all up to Mike Fox, but we could ask him to get it done early in the spring, so that people can enjoy it for the season.
Well, I was actually concerned about not having sidewalks that we think is a priority, and not having the owner willing to come forward with...
Well, the owner, I hear what you're saying. The owner's going to have to, at some point, come forward. They're just going to have to do it. And so we'll have to figure out, do we put that on their taxes? Could they make installment payments to either Mike or to the village? But at some point, because as we all know, there's some pretty bad ones, and when you're down to the dirt, you don't have a big choice. You know, it's one of those, you got to bite it. So, but we'll just, we can't have the village do it, because we've already made this plan. It wouldn't be equitable to people, as we've discussed before. I think the idea now is to find out how many terrible ones there are, and there's more than two, and then figure out a plan for those individuals. But we can discuss that at the workshop in greater detail. That's all I have. Do you have anything, Trustee McDowell?
So we had the chamber meeting this week, and as Terry mentioned, they're struggling to get volunteers for Pumpkin Chunkin', but they, they told, at that meeting, they thought they had six chunkers, but I guess down a little bit now according to Terry's. So they also told me, gave me this information that there's four tour boats coming in from American Cruise Lines.
Yes.
Next May, June, two in June, one in September, which brought the subject up, which I repeated to them because it was in our public meeting, about the international boats. And so their collective opinion is, we don't want to turn anybody away.
What do you mean by international boats?
The ones that require the customs.
Yes.
So the issue is, is that they claim that they, the chamber said, every time a boat comes in, the merchants all know it way ahead of time. And they, no one's arriving, no one's leaving. And if they choose to open early or stay late, they can, but some of them choose not to do that. And so they're saying that we're doing everything we can to accommodate the merchants downtown. And the other issue is, is that they, so anyway, so their collective position is, is that they, they don't want to turn anybody away. Because what you don't know is the intangibles. And that is, people who come in on cruise boat, maybe only are in the village for a little while, but they may come back with their family. And so.
For a week.
For a week, right. You know, and they're going to spend money here, and that's what they. So they just said, the other thing you have to realize, too, is that a lot of them who get off the cruise boat are flying home. So they're limited to what they can do. But they said, what you also need to understand is that when they go to the, the winery or they go to the distilleries, they're having stuff shipped to them. And they said, that's not uncommon, that, that the businesses are shipping stuff in, in other businesses around town, too. So they don't want to turn anybody away. So I, I agree with them, and I don't think we have to worry.
So I was in that meeting, there were four or five of us in this particular meeting with American Cruise Lines. They're, they, they tour the U.S. only. Their boats are made in the U.S. Everything is USA, over and over, their flag, they're registered, all in the U.S. They do have four, four times they want to come in. It is not a set deal in stone as of yet, only because there haven't been a contract signed. And, and that's things that RJ Marine is taking care of.
But there are international, my concern is that there are international cruise lines that are looking now.
The chamber does not have the decision whether or not they come in. It is not their decision.
No, they understand that.
It is our decision.
Their vote is, is they don't want to turn anybody away.
Well, that may be. But at the same time, we have to find out. Because as I explained earlier, and if you can have, go over and speak to Kevin anytime about this. You have to set up fencing, you've got to have customs there, you've got to have police on duty. It's more of a logistical nightmare for the international ones to come in than it is, say, somebody like American Cruise Lines. They come in, no big deal. We discussed that if there was a super yacht that wanted to come in at the same time, there's plenty of room at the dock. We also had a discussion that there will not be any bussing people out of the community. Because that's what has taken place in the past. The boats come in, the buses line up, they all get on the buses, and they leave. And they go to other areas, or they do wine things, or this type of thing. And so our downtown businesses do not profit, and they're not there walking the streets. That will not happen during this time at all. If it does, then the boats won't come back. And that's what has been specifically told to American Cruise Line. The guy, their salesperson, a very nice man, very understood. These are top-notch river cruises. I looked them up. And to do one to go to Alaska was like 6,800 a person. I mean, so they're nice cruises and whatnot. But what we don't want to see, which has happened in the past with the cruises, again, buses line up, they put them on the buses, and they leave the community. Walking around the community at 8:00 in the morning doesn't do most everyone any good. Coffee and a bagel, which is good, but, so we want the people to stay in the community. Now, if they say, well, I want to take the tour and go to Boat Castle, well, that's fine, they could do that. But we're not renting buses to take them out. They're going to stay in the community.
But why would we rent the buses?
Well, we wouldn't, but there were buses that were provided to take them out. And that is not going to happen. And that has been communicated to the chamber.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we could do both of these things.
Possibly. But we haven't had anybody, see, when I brought this up, the chief was not sure who they were.
Right.
And that's when he said, no, I prefer not to. And he said, no, 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 we're just U.S. travelers only. So there is no customs required. And we have not had any inquiries from anyone else, from any other cruise lines at this particular juncture. And you would think fairly soon, people would start to inquire, because they've got to put out their itinerary.
So if there's an international cruise, would we charge them an extra fee to cover those extra costs?
It should be, it should be, but I don't know. That has not been all worked out. But right now, we don't have to charge any additional, because they come in, they dock, and they leave. You know, and they'll be here for close to 42 hours per, per cruise.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's saying we don't want to do the American Cruise Lines.
Oh, no, 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 this is, we already talked to them.
Any cruise line is, I mean, potentially, it's worth looking at, I would think.
It's, it's worth looking at, but just to say for the chambers, like, well, we're not going to, you know, say, no, you can't come in. Well, the chamber had, a couple of people in the chamber had a big problem on that 30, that 91, 271-foot boat.
Right.
Yacht was sitting there for 30 days.
Right.
So.
Well, I mean.
It, it's a conversation that has to be had.
But just because a couple of people have a problem isn't, I mean.
Well, I agree. And the yachts, the super yachts will come back in. And if we have a super yacht and a cruise ship.
Look, we're going to look into what the, what does the village get when these boats arrive here? Last time we talked about that. What is the cost, what is the charge?
We are asking for a, what we told was, we wanted $1,000 per stop.
Per stop?
Yes. So it'd be basically 500 a day.
Right.
If you look at, in, in a 48-hour, 41-hour day.
But is that negotiable for each boat that comes in? Or do we have a, like, across Mary Street, we have a set fee?
I believe that there's a set rate that RJ Marine, and they work all of this out. We don't work it out. They're just renting the dock from us.
RJ Marine's?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what do we, what do, do we have something published that the board can see that?
Yeah, we should have something that we should.
No, we don't have anything.
Otherwise, we don't know what we're.
Well, we told them, we, we told the cruise line, and we told RJ, we want to see nothing less than $1,000 for every time they come in.
So when the super yachts come in, that's what we're talking about?
A thousand, yes, a day.
A day?
Yes. Because they, they require a little bit more.
So cruise ships, 500 a day?
I, I wouldn't put this in stone or put it in the newspaper. This is, these are just some hypotheticals that came in.
I guess when you do the next budget next year, would make sense to set rates, right? Like we do with everything else.
No, because there's more entailed to it. You, because of the communication, and RJ takes care of so much. So they're going to charge their own price. All we're doing is the dock. And if it's international, then we have to do the dock. We have to do the fencing, we have to do the policing, nothing.
Yeah, no, I get that. So you've got to charge more if it's international.
But just like this guy, boom, that's it.
So.
But to say we need to. Well, it used to be, I'm not sure. Yeah, it used to be by the ton, and RJ has the formula and.
But can I ask a question? So why, why is, what, what's the relationship between, like, why does RJ have anything to do with it?
Because they coordinate everything. If you want food for the ship, they coordinate it. You don't call up shore, find a coordinate. They coordinate the food, they coordinate all the fuel. They coordinate, like Bob was saying, somebody gets off, and five people get off and have to leave the boat, they will coordinate getting them to Watertown or Syracuse to fly out. They do all the ancillary work behind the scenes. All we're doing is renting the dock.
Renting the dock, right.
Yes.
But, okay. But that's great, but I'm just wondering, wouldn't there be a standard fee for anybody?
I can't, I, I don't know.
Having, I think, my, my personal opinion is the board ought to know what we're bringing in, you know, cash-wise for whatever boat lanes there.
You're going to bring in a thousand, you're going to bring $4,000 in from these people? If that, if that's what the contract said.
So who?
That's what we said, no less.
So who's writing the check to the village?
The boat crews. No, who's writing the check to the village, I believe, is RJ Marine, because they pay RJ.
So could RJ then charge, like, three times as much for the dockage? And then no one charges a thousand bucks?
Sure. Well, that's what happened with the super yacht.
But, but I, I guess my point is.
We're not the broker, we're just renting the dock.
A, a government entity and a, and a nonprofit. And, and so why, why does RJ automatically get all this extra money? I guess that's why.
Because they're the broker.
I mean, I don't know anything, I don't know anything about RJ. I don't really even know what they do, other than they get gas there, but.
Because they're the broker. Somebody's got to organize these coming in. And we're not going to do that.
Right.
You know, and they come in and say, a week ahead, you know, we need 25,000 pounds of bananas.
Right.
RJ will fix that out. And that's not going to be Amanda enjoying.
No, I get that, I understand that.
They're the broker. We're just renting the dock.
Right. That's all I think we're talking about, is renting the dock. And, and so I'm still struggling with why that's not a standardized fee like the Mary Street Dock is. You want to rent the Mary Street Dock for a day, it's 1,250.
Well, when I get the numbers, I'll bring them, I'll send them out and bring them to the next one. Because they know in the past, we've been undercharging.
Yeah, well, I think.
Part of our budget process, right?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think that's.
But I also, I mean, I wouldn't put these boats into our budget, because that's a hit.
Well, you're not, no, absolutely.
So I wouldn't even budget it, just a.
Reasonable and, like, for example.
It seems like the thousand is the reasonable rate.
But how do we know that? Like, I, I don't know.
Why don't you go check with Kate Benson?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, they don't have the dock.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No one has docks around here.
Right, so how do we know thousands are right?
Who, true. Alex Bay doesn't have any boats coming in. But, well, I, I'll get more information from Kevin and Paulson.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the, like, you know, yeah. It'd be nice to set a specific rate. And then, that way, also, the boat knows that RJ's not, you know, sticking them with a huge rate, even though, I don't.
Well, we do everything else that way. So we should have a schedule so that we can look it up and give it to an applicant or whatever.
But we would, but, but I think there's, we would not be giving these to the applicants. It's all still going to go through RJ. And RJ's going to set up. So when somebody calls and says, demand a on from ABC Cruise Line, she's going to also pass it over to Kevin, who's going to coordinate with RJ. She's not going to say, well, we usually get a thousand bucks. That's what I'm saying.
Well, but you can see why the board would like to see that in writing.
Well, I would believe.
Strictly running out of space at the dock, nothing else.
Right.
And it should be fairly simple, because it's basically, that's all we're doing. So it'd be so much per boat. Now, the other part would be is, if you're saying each boat, 18-footer all the way to a 200-footer is the same. I mean, that's the things that are going to cost.
Yeah, like, is it by the foot, by the ton, you know, by the whatever?
It's most likely by footer tonnage, because you don't want it, an 18-foot isn't going to dock at the municipal dock. It's that, I say designed, you couldn't get into the boat in low water. Also, there was a cruise ship that came in, like, two weeks ago, roughly. It was at night. It was last Monday. It was at night, somebody had fallen and broken their leg. I don't know where they were from. And they came in, dropped the, the person off. Tears was right there for them. At 3:00 in the morning, Tears took him, took care of him, boom, out, they were gone. They were gone, but they smashed into our land. So we have to have them get that fixed.
No, it's an emergency situation, right?
Oh, no, that's why you have ports like this for emergency situation. But there's no reason why we should pay for the dock. You guys broke it. You pay for the, you pay for the latter, rather.
No, I agree. I, I don't think anyone's arguing. I think we're just saying, it'd be nice if there was a standard rate based on whatever we decided it's based on, whether it be footer tonnage or whatever. I, and probably even square feet, in the sense of, you can't just do the length, you probably want to add, you know, the width. Because a long, you know, eight-foot wide is a lot different than a, a long 20-foot wide.
Just some parameters.
Yep.
One last thing for me, and it's, I just think it sets a bad precedent. But as of noon today, the no parking sign continues to hang. And so my question is, is when is it coming down?
It's coming down when I get out there with my box cutter and take it down.
My, my opinion is that.
It's not my position to do. I should be enforcing and telling the dock master and other people to take it down. And they're not doing their job.
It's the dock master's, in my opinion, the dock master's responsibility to make sure that those things do not happen and correct them when they do. So I really think that that needs to be impressed upon the dock master.
I'd agree.
I won't press upon it tomorrow.
That's all I got.
Bob, do you have anything?
I don't, no.
Trustee Duffer?
Yes, I have a few things I want to order. And so we had a planning board meeting. And originally, the agenda had two town meetings, so I didn't attend that. Apparently, two pre-applications came in, one from Jess Senical and.
Mark Morgen.
And Morges, which I was a little upset, because I would have attended that.
We told Mark not to go. He wasn't on the agenda. I spoke with Mark, numerous people spoke to Mark. The information hadn't been given out. And he said, I don't care, I'm going anyways. I spoke with Adam, I tried to speak with the chairman. No, no communication. I spoke with Adam about it. He just said, okay. And they did a pre-app that night. The Senical one is a bit confusing. So we all met, I had, on the following Monday to talk about it, because he wants to add two more apartments in the back. He doesn't need a variance as far as backsets and things of that nature. But there's numerous other questions that we have. And we basically said, yeah, we don't think this is going to fly, but you can still come back.
So I had a couple of things. One, doing it that way, I think the board, and that's not this board, I'm talking the planning board.
Oh, this wasn't even, this should not have even have happened.
Right.
These, these applicants just showed up.
That's where the planning board should have came up and said, I'm sorry, but you are not here. The public does not know nothing about this pre-application. And we had nobody at the village representing the village. And it was a.
Because one person was sick in bed. And he knew he couldn't go. And the other person had called me and said, no, he wasn't going. And I said, well, have you gotten these two things taken care of? And he said, yes. I said, have you spoken to the chairman? He said, yes.
These are, these are procedures.
I understand, and I agree with you. I, I don't disagree with you. What you have here also in the community is, you have had strong people, they're going to do what they want to do. I don't care if you don't want me to go, I'm going anyways. Yeah? So.
Okay. I know, but it's kind of a mix-up, because the way.
It was very much of a.
Ended up.
Because they.
Bringing everything over too much.
That is correct. And Mike was, was sick.
The fact that that's made it so that the village didn't have any representation.
But we, I follow you, but we weren't supposed to have anything on the agenda.
Is there, not hard by ignorance, but are there any village representatives on the village or the planning board? Or no, is it all joint? No, I know it's a joint.
And, yes, Doug and Sherry here in the village.
Yeah.
And I've tried to communicate a number of times on that Thursday with them. No, no.
But David and Mike weren't there, so we didn't have any representation.
Well, I would have went to it.
Yes, looking out for the.
But you're, which is fine, but you're not the zoning or codes, so what you say. That's all. It doesn't add, doesn't have any meat to it, because we don't have the authority, any of us here.
And so that's where my second thing came in, the Jeff Senical. And I talked to him, and if a project comes in and it doesn't meet the code, then Mike needs to deny the application. He can't, like on this parking area, there's, there's 15 spots on there. The planning board is not the person or the group board to, or should go to due to the fact that they cannot change or vary the code. So the proper procedure would be that Mike would deny it, being not enough parking, and then it would have to go to ZVA, not the planning board.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, it seemed to me, in the meeting, that Adam said that this was a planning board issue. It's not, this is a joint.
Well, this, this particular situation on James Street was started before it ever came to us. Somebody downtown made some of these decisions, and, and the planning board, they were told they didn't have to go get a variance, they didn't go to the ZVA at all. Then it went to the planning board, and the planning board said, paraphrase, yep, you can do this contingent upon that you have enough parking. And there is no parking for what they currently have, and now you wanna add two more, and there's not proper water drainage, there's, you know, where are you gonna put your trash? There's a number of questions, and when we met with his planner, who's not an architect, who's not an engineer, he said nothing the entire time. We had two people from the ZVA, we had Mr. Powers from the planning board, Mike and myself, and the planner said nothing. And then picked his papers up and ran down downtown.
That was gonna be my next point that needs to be clarified, is that Adam went ahead with that last project, and they approved it on the contingency that the.
And that has to stop.
That has to stop.
And I agree with you.
Interact contingency, you know, you're putting pressure on Mike, and the apartments were already built, and then they come back and do the driveway. If it doesn't meet that, he's already got the apartments built, so we cannot operate that way.
And that's why I said to Mike, because I, I, I received a letter, or the village received a letter in reference to the laundromat, because that was, as Mr. McGowan knows, that was contingent upon doing landscaping. And the letter says that we don't have the funds to do it this year, next year, we'll try and do something, a little bit more put in there. And I read that letter on Friday, and I gave it to Mike, and I said, between the laundromat and the apartments, this is not gonna happen anymore, and either you can tell the planning board, or I can, we're not doing this stuff anymore, because no one's following up, but you already put your buildings up, well, where are you gonna put parking? And anybody, you're more than welcome to walk back in there, there is not even parking for what is currently there, it's a.
And that's why the contingency is so wrong.
Well, can't they hold off the, the, uh, certificative documents either?
Yes, that would be the thing that would actually happen, would be that they would revoke the permit.
Oh, you've already got people living in it without a CEO.
Well, then he should get fined, like, there should be some per day fine.
It's the same thing, if he doesn't, with a contingency, the permit is not supposed to be signed until everything is done on the contingencies.
Right.
If it isn't done, then he wouldn't be operating the laundromat. Now, this is just a small thing, and I wouldn't do it that way, but what I'm saying is, that's the way that the procedure would stay.
Let's, and, and what you're saying is excellent material, and then let's backtrack. We've only had our own zoning person for a year, and he took no program and made it into a program. Code officer came in in June of this year. So we can institute all of this starting now, what was done in the past is not a whole heck we can do about it.
I understand that.
Yes, I know you don't.
Well, that's why I'm bringing up, 'cause I wanna make sure that the board is on the same wavelength as what I'm thinking is, what should be done.
Oh, yes.
And my thing is, is that whether it's approved or not approved, I wanna make sure every single procedure that we do is appropriate.
That's correct, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, and you have to follow the rules, if you're not gonna follow the rules, then you don't get to do it.
Now, just as another side, the same thing about ZVA and planning, there's a big, what would you call it? It's not a poster, banner, put up against on the ABM wall, you know, they put a new one up. But they never got permission for the first one, and they never got permission for this. So now it's time for the TIR Center, 'cause they wanna put up a new sign, and they want a variance for the sign they want put up, and they're making comments about, well, you know, they have, they have theirs, they just put it up. Mike has talked to them, he said, your, your permit has been denied, you're gonna have to go in front of the ZVA, et cetera, et cetera.
I like, I was talking to Mike, and I like the way he's thinking.
Oh, he's thinking.
He's thinking that it's black and white.
Yes, it is, and it is.
It either follows the code, or it doesn't, and that's the way it's gotta be, 'cause otherwise, we're being unfair to everyone else.
Right, you can't, it's not as good as what their name is, or how much money.
And these two scenarios came in, took off way before we had anything to do with any of this. That's the reasoning for our, our code zoning department, as you all know.
Before Dave left, hopefully temporarily, he had mentioned in the last meeting that he was going to provide us with some language for the codes that would put some teeth into it, and meaning fines and that sort of thing. And so I don't, I guess that's on hold right now.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, so, until we move ahead and get that sort of thing lined up, we're kind of a toothless type here, I mean, we can threaten, but unless we actually nail somebody's feet to the floor and say, it's two hundred and fifty bucks a day until you make it right.
Well, I think, I, I, I think, though, that with new projects that come on, just as Ron was saying, you've got your checklist, and if your parking doesn't meet it, then you're not gonna go and get a variance for parking.
No, you could.
But, but, well, you could, but they've.
Yeah.
So you don't give them a variance, that's how you're going to control it. It's not gonna be controlled by fines and fines and fines and fines, I don't think, it has to be controlled from the get-go, going to the meetings.
Now, I'm actually talking about when you step out of line and you don't put up what you said you would put up, and that sort of thing, as we were talking earlier.
Yeah, you latently violate that.
Right, latently violate it, and.
But I don't know that we have any opportunity to go back to, say, the, two years later.
Well, that gives, no, I, I agree.
But right now, but from going forward, we circle.
Right, but the sooner we get something down in writing, the sooner then we can start enforcing it, right?
Correct, but I think that's with your, that's with your checklist, it says, and that's what Dave started over a year ago, was, if your checklist isn't filled out, you're not going to the planning board, if your checklist isn't filled out, you're not going to the ZVA, we're not gonna have seventy meetings.
Right, vindictive, is what you're saying.
Right, but the, the monies, the, the fines you're talking about have to do with these cars and whatnot. Then, yes, yeah, they have to do with the cars.
The thing, well, what we need to do is make sure is that if it doesn't meet it, it's a denial. He has to go to ZVA to get it corrected.
Right, yeah.
Actually, I think more of the banners being put up.
If there is anything in there that is needed to be done, it has to be done before the permit is signed.
Right, right.
So you want your occupancy status, if you've done complete all the land, you're.
And you could also give them a stop work order, too, if they, if they, you know, if they didn't do something, they're starting to do something, just enough stop work order.
Oh, yeah, we can do that now, but we can't do it for things that we had no control over.
Yeah, because what the problem was, is for the laundromat is, is that his CBO was given to him before any of the contingencies were met.
Right, exactly.
And you can't do that.
I'd be wondering if he even asked.
That's where your hammer is.
Right, but that already happened.
Yes.
Yeah, that's done.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're all on the same page, but we need to get something, so going forward.
I wanted to make sure that I brought it up, so that when I say something to Mike, I, everybody is agreeing.
Yeah, no, I think, no, I'm glad I brought it, because.
Oh, I, we, he and I had that conversation.
We don't wanna have a situation where, oh, you know, oh, the one guy's sick and the other guy can't make it, we're, we're gonna go to this meeting and push this through, because there's no way from the village there.
But in this, they were.
The planning board at that point should speak up and say.
They should speak up.
Well, they should.
We're not on the agenda, we can't see.
And that's what they did to James Street with Senical, no, there's nothing one he can do.
This is the way it's supposed to be.
With Morgen, they did it as a pre-application.
I think you're a hundred percent there.
And that's okay, you need to have a pre-application, and so they did that with Morgen on that night, but Senical, they said, yeah, no. We're not moving.
No, so they did what they're supposed to.
Well, we gotta keep on their toes, too, because.
Well, I was hoping that it helped you attract, because Dave was missing, and the issue is, is even a pre-application needs to be published, you know?
Right.
And if they're, if they're gonna have that, if it isn't, just like the rest of it, you got five days and to get it.
Well, I think they should do that on the agendas.
It's always has been, this is the first time I've ever saw that, it just happened to be two village things under that.
But they weren't supposed to be.
No, I, yeah.
We told them, don't go, and they said.
I think we're all the same, I think we're all.
Yes, we are.
No, I'm glad I, I wanted to discuss that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anything else?
One last thing.
Yes.
I was really pleased at the response you got from the town today. Oh, yeah. What happened, yeah, yeah, that's great, we talked about that.
It did, yes. I was gonna, I, I have a few questions that I, I want to see more in writing than just the email, but I was pleased about that, yes.
I have a question I asked the man in the western, do we have a joint meeting with the town coming up, or?
Well, you know, what's funny is when we canceled it, you sent out the cancellation, and we'd like, how about the twenty-seven?
I thought you said, mentioned something.
Crooked, crooked, and crooked. And I'm way over chasing people down in my life, and I'm over that, so, so.
Okay.
Maybe we'll have one, but you gotta talk to me, you gotta let me know.
But at least, at least that, yeah, that chamber thing is.
Well, it's 'cause they're doing the budget now, you all might want.
Well, it doesn't matter what the reason is.
You might wanna look at their budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And see where some of the money is going.
Yeah, it's, it's better than nothing, I mean, we, we had nothing before.
Well, I do agree with that.
Yeah. It's twenty-six thousand dollars better than nothing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So that was a done deal, you were saying?
Well, that's, you got the email, I, you know, it says it's a done deal, but is.
Yeah, we're gonna give it directly to the chamber.
Is Israeli Hamas situation a done deal? Not really, so, I wanna see it in, in real writing, not just in email. Alrighty, who would like to make the most.
I'll make the most.
Get out of this topic, Sam.
I'll start here.
In a second, all a favor?
All right.
Nancy, that was funny.
I noticed you went on the.
You go on, it's, it's, it's the Russian Ukrainian thing?
It would, it would stonk me, it would stonk me.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
They all say.
Thought that was.
Public comments. You don't ask for public comments before you go to the meeting?
Oh.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's all right, I mean, I had just a couple of quick things, can I?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, no, that's okay, um, part of parking, um, I, I parked in the two spots that are supposed to be redone by the boat museum in front of, of Channel marker, or the, the Woodboat Museum, the Woodboat, what is it, the brewery? Yeah, I parked in those two spots, and the policeman came into the restaurant and said he didn't wanna give me a ticket, 'cause I was parking there illegally, and there's nothing on either one of those two spots that says I can't park there.
If you were pulled in parking?
I, I.
Did you pull in, or did you parallel?
I pulled into the parking space between the two lines, and there's two of them.
You're not supposed to, the lines have been covered up?
No, they're not, they're, they're not covered up.
Yes, they are.
They were wide open, I, I pulled right into them.
We've painted them a couple of times, we have signs up there now that say.
It's if the, it's if the, it's if the, uh, the driveway entrance.
Yeah.
Well, those aren't, those aren't marked with anything, you know?
Yes, they are, they're, they've been painted black.
They look like two parking spaces, do you know?
They've been painted black.
Look, I talked to Terry about it, and it was kind of a goofy mess, correcting it, some of the paint had come off of some of the markings, and that they're gonna redo.
We paint, they painted the whole square, because this has been going on for two or three weeks, it clearly is marked that they're parallel parking. Alright, it's handicap parking, the sign, there's a sign.
Handicap's part of parallel, right?
Yeah, the handicap.
The other two are sideways.
They're both.
Diagonal.
They're both handicapped, they're all parallel along the ABM side.
Some early evening, um.
I mean, we could go.
Oh, no, uh, over the weekend.
Over the weekend.
Yeah, well, I told the police to tell people not to park there, because.
Okay.
It's not the parking, the parking is parallel on that side.
What you're saying is, it's not well marked.
It's not well marked, I, I have no clue that there was no parking there, I mean, it looked like a regular parking spot, but narrower.
Right.
Um, the other thing is downtown with the lift, that they're painting the building, and they parked the lift in two parking spots, and then parked, and it was busy all weekend. Can't that lift go move someplace else, and the other observation was, that when I walked on the sidewalk, the lift is right on top of me. Is that not a, a wheelchair violation, or can they legally put some, you know, the stand was right over the sidewalk?
Yeah, it was.
So I just don't know if it's, you know, and, and it takes up two parking spaces, can they move that lift?
I mean, see, if we had a great idea.
On the weekends when they're not using it.
I would be thankful that they're painting the buildings.
I can understand that, well, no, I can understand that, but I was looking at the saving factor.
To the authenticity, I'd be thankful, they take up two parking spots, I agree, but we're thankful, we gotta do it at some point.
Yeah, right, right, right.
You know, so I'm thankful that Ryman's is doing theirs.
Yeah.
Topaz is, is just about finished.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thanks.
I agree for.
Yeah, uh, somebody told me that that lift is required to have a lock once they lock it up at night.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking about that, I don't know how great of an idea they, they're leaving out there during pumpkin choker weekend. Should we not just ask them to move it?
Yeah, let's just ask them to move it out of the way for the weekend.
Yeah, I mean, that's not.
It's only Tuesday, we don't know that they're, we don't know what they're gonna do by Friday.
Okay, I know, somebody before Friday can tell.
It's Ryman's decorating.
Yeah.
They're very well aware of what goes on in the community, so we'll bring it up.
Thank, thank, thank you.
Thank you.